What you're looking at right now is my conference portfolio. In freshman year, I made this page called "Looking to the Future", and it has goals that I made for the upcoming year, which I only really made them because I wanted to make my portfolio look bigger and more professional. And as I said, I didn't really think about it much until my sophomore year. When I looked back at that page and I realized that I had actually achieved some of the goals I had made. So I wrote this page here where I talked about the goals I had made and what I had achieved and what I hadn't achieved. And then I thought it was really cool that I had been able to achieve so much. So I did it again. So I set more goals for the next semester, and then I even went further and made some long-term goals. And it's been really helpful for me to have these goals. It keeps me on track, and I really enjoy being able to achieve things.
Artifact is my application essay, which I will be using for possible college applications. And I think something that makes this artifact most valuable is the fact that it combines who I am as a person and as an individual along with the highlights of my academics. So it kind of just shows who I am as a person overall, both inside of school and outside of school. And this particular essay, or just the skill of being able to, you know, write well, will definitely be used in my future a lot. So I really think that this piece is valuable in many ways.
Ms. Sarah, and I'm a student at Appalachian State University. I attended Polaris K-12 School for all 13 years. At App State, many of our classes require us to use an electronic portfolio to show our learning over the course of the semester. So not only do we add artifacts, but we're also required to reflect on our learning from each assignment and from over the semester. So using the portfolios throughout my years at Polaris has given me a strong foundation in self-reflection and showing evidence of my growth and has helped me to prepare better for creating portfolios in my college career.
Thank you, and if you have any questions or you'd like to see more, you are welcome at any time to come and visit our school.
So open it up for any board comments, questions? I do have one. So as we saw with Sarah, does she still have access to her electronic portfolio once she has left the Anchorage School District?
So this particular platform, there are several options. Students who are enrolled in universities who are currently using it, such as Appalachian State, they automatically have access and their portfolios maintain. They don't disappear. Also, students can choose to, it's like a $20 a year fee they could pay, or if they're alumni and sign up as alumni, they can access their old portfolios. So all of that record is still there.
So they aren't erased, okay? Because that would seem to be, they may not even initially see its value, but then want to come back to it and have access to it, okay? So what they start in kindergarten definitely is built all of their 13 years at Polaris, okay? Thank you. Thank you so much. I think it's fascinating. Thank you for sharing that initiative.
Thank you. And so for the second part of our e-portfolio presentation, I'd like to introduce Adrian. Adrian Reed, come on up and bring anyone that you have with you.
Madam Chair. Could we just know for the record that the superintendent is excused today?
Yes, thank you very much.
The agenda notes that.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Thomas. I actually will be presenting on behalf of the Faithful Few. The founder, Adrian Reed, that's my mother, she's here and present. But I'm a board member, and I'll be presenting on behalf of the Faithful Few. Just a little backdrop of myself. I am an Anchorage School District graduate. I graduated about 11 years ago when I was not married with four kids. So when I was here, I was Jessica Reed, so I'm now Jessica Thomas. So what we're really trying to do for the Faithful Few is basically continue the conversation that the principal at Polaris spoke about just previously and kind of talk about the potential of e-portfolios on a larger scale within the Anchorage School District. And so I have for you a couple of options of blended models that are being currently used around the country. I currently am an educator in Philadelphia and a teacher leader, and so these are some of the models that are currently focused in different levels of research. So what you'll see are, there's three examples. Model 1 is a digital binder. That's typically just what, if you took the current Anchorage School District scholarship portfolio, scanned that all in, uploaded it, that would be considered a digital binder. Model 2 is an instructional tool where the e-portfolio actually comes in and transcends educational learning and where the teachers and the students are collaborators in the design of curriculum and curriculum implementation and execution. And then Model 3 is using the e-portfolio as a marketing tool. So typically, you might see that now with a lot of professionals. They're trying to market themselves instead of coming in with a resume. They're coming in with an iPad, and they're actually marketing themselves with a digital portfolio of their accomplishments. So what we're going to do is actually look at the model in real life. So we're going to look at the digital binder version. So this right here is actually my digital binder. It's operated through a free Web 2.0 tool called Live Binder, which schools can subscribe to, all right? What I originally did was, when I graduated from the Anchorage School District, I took the Anchorage School District Scholarship Portfolio model and used it to adapt to my educational career in Philadelphia. So I took the elements of it. I actually uploaded my scholarship portfolio. And as you can see in this model, there's actual tabs that mirror an actual binder. So if you were to take a binder and actually put dividers in it, this is what it would look like digitally. What I have done is I have reconstructed that binder, and this was from my undergraduate years, and actually created individual tabs that represent different artifacts from classwork. So if you look at Educational Resources, the second tab, and that would be my resume when I was an undergrad, and then going all the way to different schoolwork. So the potential for the Anchorage School District is something that Faithful Few was at the forefront of, is actually taking the binder that students would actually use to highlight student artifacts and work, kind of what Polaris is doing now, and actually molding that and adding that, infusing that to actual marketing tool. And you'll see that in the next slide. So this highlights the current traditional Anchorage School District Scholarship Portfolio. It's more of a highlight of students' grades, extracurriculars, and awards and services. And it allows them to personalize and market themselves for post-secondary funding opportunities. That's currently what's on the table. And it's in a printed format. Yes, you can download it from the ASD website and turn it into a Google Doc, but if you actually wanted to share that with somebody, it would have to stay a Google Doc or put in a Google Drive email. If you use a fuse model, which is what Faithful Few was proposing, is it would actually take the digital binder concept and the marketing tool concept and fuse those together. So what the new binder, the new e-portfolio possibly could look like is a section that's dedicated to career planning component, which would be taking the scholarship portfolio and dividing that into binder sections digitally, but also creating grade-level components. So in Philadelphia and other cities, what they do is they allow department heads to come together and actually decide on a common assessment that the students in a particular grade or content area would submit at the end of a quarter or end of a semester. And that artifact would represent that student's growth during that particular time. And then you would keep on uploading different artifacts. So by the time the student graduates, they have artifacts that cover an array of different disciplines. But also, on the other side, the ASD component would be that financial literacy component. So what's nice about that is instead of students having to always apply to college and submit writing samples and upload, they would actually have to just upload one link. So people could just click and click and go through all the different components. So the next slide talks about the benefits of such a model. So there's a couple of different benefits. One, from the student standpoint, it's a live, living document, something that you can access all the time, that can travel with you. And as you can see from my personal example, I've been updating my scholarship portfolio here from Anchorage since I've been out of school. Now I'm working on my PhD, so it's been very beneficial for me. In addition, for teachers, it allows for them to be able to make connections between what they're doing in the classroom and the post-secondary career planning elements that students are doing on a day-to-day basis. And for counselors, it helps them bring in other stakeholders to actually support them in this career planning effort, which can be a very tumultuous task for our counselors to do today. So that is our highlights. Thank you.
Fabulous. I want to open it up for some questions from board members. Mr. Holman?
I'm just curious, do you know if any school district that's actually replaced a traditional diploma and gone with building a portfolio is the pathway to graduation?
So the portfolio doesn't replace a diploma. It is an actual tool or comprehensive artifact that highlights the student's abilities and potential. So it doesn't replace the diploma, it's just an added value mechanism.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Very informative presentation. Appreciate it.
Now for the second part, it's time for our charter school update. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Vinchek, and he'll come forward and introduce the charter school reports.
Thank you. President Acosta Geezler, members of the board, Deputy Superintendent Stock. Today, you are electronically provided with our charter school summary reports for the 2016-2017 school year. This concise report is a compilation of the data for each charter school from the past school year. As you look this report over in the next few days, please feel free to call me with any questions you may have. Dr. Bishop requested that each charter principal be given an opportunity to make a brief presentation at today's work session to give you some highlights from each school. Before they begin, and on behalf of the 10 charter schools in the Anchorage School District, I'd like to thank you for this chance to celebrate some of the amazing work and opportunities available at our charter schools. While we know that our district is rich with incredible neighborhood schools, alternative schools, and alternative programs, we know that our public charter schools provide a unique opportunity for our district to sponsor schools that are governed by their own elected boards, called Academic Policy Committees, or APCs. In Alaska, only the local school districts can authorize and operate public charter schools. As a result, we have a tremendous partnership between our ASD charter schools and the Anchorage School District. Our charter school principals, working collaboratively with their APCs, are fiscally responsible while all the time looking at ways to educate and enrich the lives of our ASD students who attend these schools. Each charter school is its own complex system, in many ways comparable to operating and maintaining a school district. The elected APC board hires their principal, who in turn is responsible for not only promoting educational excellence, but in every way, but is also maintaining their budgets for their leased space and the maintenance and operation of that leased space. APCs hold monthly open meetings and participate in timely strategic planning sessions to continually chart the school's direction for the future. Each principal will now talk about their schools in alphabetical order. And once we've gone from A to W, the principals and I stand ready to answer any questions you may have. I would like to point out that Principal Huber from PIDEA is not with us this evening. She couldn't attend. So in her place is outstanding teacher Joanna Wester. Before they begin, I'd just like to thank Kathy Moffett and Dr. Sun and all the principals for assisting in putting this presentation together, and to Dr. Bishop for her continued support of charter schools. So I think the format's going to be, Dr. Stock, do you have a microphone?
We do.
We're going to have five. We're going to have five of the charter school principals stand up and just talk a little bit about their schools. When they're done, we'll have the other five speak.
All right, I guess I'll start. My name is Bangi Agiter. I am the principal at the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School in Anchorage. We are a pre-K through 8th grade school. I have three minutes, so I'm just going to give you a couple of the highlights. We do offer UPIC language instruction. Every student receives a total of 90 minutes of UPIC instruction a week. That is two 45-minute vlogs a week. We focus on the whole child by infusing SEL and native values with academics. So we begin every single morning with a school-wide morning gathering, where we all get together in the gym. And we have a guest elder come and talk to the kids about the SEL lesson for the week. So for an example, this week, we're focusing on self-control. And our morning guest elder today was Ms. Lucy Brown. She talked to the kids about who she is, where she comes from, her culture, her background. And then she talked to the kids about self-control. And she talked to the kids about UPIC values that represent self-control, that teach about self-control. And she talked about the black bear, because the black bear represents self-control. It shows a lot of self-control. And so that's how we begin. Today's Monday, so for the next two weeks, we will be focusing on self-control. And the kids will be learning about that every morning during a morning gathering. We then take that character that we're learning over the next two weeks and teachers integrate that in with their second-step curriculum when they teach SEL lessons in their classroom. So we're focusing on, you know, what the district is focusing on, but what's specific to us as the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School, which are native values. We have Culture Week in May. We hire over 20 local native artists. They come in, they spend a week with the kids. They teach very specific arts and crafts. And by the end of the week, every kid is expected to produce a piece. So if a kid signed up to work on cuspucks, by the end of the week, we expect every single kid in that group to have finished their cuspuck. And then we get together the last night of Culture Week Friday night. We have a family night. It's a potluck family night. And our families come in and they bring all kinds of food. And all of the kids' arts and crafts that they made throughout the week are showcased. Parents walk around looking at what kids made. They ask questions, they interact with the artists, and it's a wonderful experience. We have very, very highly committed business partners. Southside Foundation, the Siri Foundation. We have a very beautiful, I think amazing relationship, business partnership with Novo Foundation, which is a nonprofit organization. Their office is in New York. And this year, they just offered us, well, I had to apply for it, a $600,000 grant. We're going to be receiving $200,000 every year over the next three years. And we use that grant to fund one of our UPIC teachers. We have two full-time UPIC teachers. One of them is funded out of that grant. And my full-time art teacher is funded out of that grant as well as Culture Week, which costs us about $20,000, $25,000 a year. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for giving me the chance to talk about Aquarian. My name's Lucas Saltzman. This is my sixth year as principal at Aquarian Charter School. Beyond the reports you've been given or the slides that are being presented, I thought it might be good, since I only have two minutes, to just tell you a little bit about the work that we're doing at Aquarian, just to give you a flavor of what it is as a program. For the first three years of the program, I really spent time trying to figure out its identity. It's a very eclectic program. It's a rigorous academic program that also honors the arts and sort of the whole-brain experience and the different intelligence that students have as they come to learning. So it can be, and it also has a Flesse Spanish component. So it has a lot of moving pieces. It also has an integrated technology piece. So I was always searching for identity, and I think two years ago, I thought, you know what? We're just really trying to do school really well. And it's a good way to sum up what Aquarian's trying to do. And some of the work that's inspiring us right now, we really enjoy the work that Ron Berger's doing in experiential learning and project-based learning. We just got back from a week in Finland. Three teachers and I were over there at a creative and innovation seminar in that country for a week. We had a launch at the beginning of this year with a Kennedy Fellow artist who does arts integration and helped us understand better how we can make connections with kids, help them retain their learning, help them be more inspired in their learning. And I think the long-term goal and where all of these projects are heading, there's multiple book studies happening within the staff, are really looking at what does the 21st century learner look like? What's the context that they're building around their learning? How are they using media? How do we respond to it? And then academically, our focus is really on writing. We have strong academics historically in all subject areas, but we really feel like developing a good 21st century writing piece for our program is key to success for us academically in the scope of the work that we're doing. And then also, it's hard to define what a 21st century learner is, but what does that ultimate output look like as far as exhibition work or portfolio work? but what does that ultimate output look like as far as exhibition work or portfolio work and sort of showcasing the students? So really, Aquarian is about focusing on the student, and there's a lot of experiences around that. So you're welcome to come visit anytime. And thank you for giving me a couple of moments to talk about my program.
Hi, I'm Kitty Logan. I'm principal at Eagle Academy Charter School out in Eagle River. I like to boast that we are the best elementary Eagle, or elementary charter school program out in Eagle River, because we're the only one. Now, certainly, Eagle Academy stands for Academic Excellence. The school was founded by parents and teachers who wanted higher academic standards and greater consistency across the grade levels. Well, why are we so successful out there? Well, we have a challenging curriculum in all academic areas. Our teachers are well-trained in Spalding writing, reading, and Saxon math. In fact, staff development in Spalding is ongoing and consistent. New staff members are mentored specifically in Spalding, and it's been available to us every year. Parents averaged, get this, over thirty hours of volunteer time last year. And their kids get to see them helping at school, and thus it instills the importance of education. Homework, although it's not a very popular thing at Eagle Academy, it is required with parent support, and it's expected to start in first grade. Well, how is Eagle Academy unique? Well, we use a standards-based assessment and reporting system where students are assessed on specific skills. Our standards-based report card reflects which skills a student has mastered and which ones are in need of more support or instruction. Language, arts, and math are leveled. Students are grouped by achievement level and not by grade level. I like to think of it as our kids in math and language arts have an IEP, because they're taught where they need to be. Our special education program uses the inclusive model, where our professionals deliver instruction right in the classroom. If a student needs assistance on a standard, they're struggling for whatever reason, they are immediately pulled and targeted for intervention provided by staff members and sixth-grade tutors. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. I'm proud to be part of the Anchorage School District.
Good afternoon, my name is Deanne Carroll. I'm the principal at Family Partnership Charter School. One of the things that we are really proud of is that we're celebrating our twentieth year with the Anchorage School District in homeschooling. And I want to thank Kathleen Plunkett, who so graciously gave up her time last week to join us at our celebration. And so, two minutes is really a short time to talk about a program as diverse as ours. If you can see on the slide, that's our mission. You know, we really believe in the value of parents and their abilities to drive their students' education. And so we work in a partnership with them to have curriculum choice. That's one of the key components, is parents get to choose what curriculum they're using, and we work really hard with them to make sure that it meets all of the state and district standards for the grade level and the content area. We have an early college program that we have been partnering with the US Department of Education and their Teach to Lead program. Before I got there in 2014, they had some students taking classes at the university. And we've really tried to form, wrap around support for our kiddos and show that homeschool kids can actually achieve high levels of academic rigor. So starting with thirty-two students in 2014-15, we now have fifty-two students this year taking a hundred and one classes in just the first semester alone at UAA. And so our kids average a GPA of 3.44. And so we know that they are actually meeting the levels of academic rigor. We do have a lot of work to do. We have a portion of our population that we support through our On Track program to help graduate within the four years. And then we have small group classes in which families can partner with certified teachers to get instructional support two days a week. And then the other three days a week, we call that class at home. And so, you know, we have roughly six hundred and sixty kids this year, and they all have individualized learning plans. So basically, they all receive differentiated instruction. And we have a lot of things going on in our school, and I really encourage you to come and visit us. Consider it an open invitation anytime.
Thank you, Deanne. My assistant, Michael Curry, is gonna pass something out to you. I'm Jerry Finkler from Frontier Charter School, and I appreciate this opportunity. I realize that I could probably best share with you about our school by sharing good news at our school. Fourteen years ago, Frontier Charter School began a program to support the homeschool philosophy that one of the primary reasons parents choose to homeschool their children is their belief that they can help each of their children achieve academic excellence. And so for fourteen years, we've stuck with that one mission and developed along the way. We just recently opened a second administrative center in Eagle River. It's hard to see in that picture, but we have a facility that we share with Starbucks. The red arrow kind of points down at it. We provide parents a place to meet with academic advisors at that facility. It's a place to pick up curriculum, a place for school assessments, and parents can have coffee while they wait, student clubs, tutoring. Some more good news is that last year, each month of the winter, we welcomed kids in crisis who came to us from the comprehensive high schools in a need of a correspondence study arrangement. This September, I added a new teacher to function as my graduation coach, helping these students who are behind in credit to catch up and to graduate. And our final good news is by my sidekick here, Michael. I don't know if you knew this, but we partner with the South Central Foundation's Pathway Home. Children come in from the villages every month of the year, twelve months out of the year, and Michael has just one spot of good news. I told him he only had twenty seconds for this, but it's good news.
The piece of paper that I passed out to you all is Lexile reading, and it's basically, if you look at it, grades one through grade twelve, and it says where young folks should be on a reading level. And the really, really, really neat thing is, we're a twelve-month-year school. And so let's be around, and this, just this summer alone, from May fifteen to roughly September one, our eighteen, nineteen students averaged, each student averaged thirty-two and a half Lexile improvement, per student, per month. And basically, for an average student, you're looking at fifty Lexiles in a year's growth. So each one of those students just almost improved their reading level almost a full year each month this summer. And our kids come in, they're a little behind in credit, a little behind in reading. So it's kind of skewed a little bit, but it's still impressive that we could get the kids to be able to be focused and make those kinds of gains.
The way our partnership works is we enroll the students at Frontier, many of them after the count, and then we take the resources we have and provide materials and educational supplies to the Pathway Home. And we, our staff and their staff work really well together. Thank you, Michael. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'd like to thank the five that just spoke, five charter schools. If we could have our other five round off our ten. We'll start with Dr. Shapiro.
We'll give some claps in between.
Alright.
Good afternoon, my name is Michael Shapiro. I'm the principal at Highland Academy. What makes Highland Academy Charter School unique? After listening to Kitty talk, it occurred to me that we're kind of Eagle Academy grown-up a little bit. We are a competency-based learning environment, and I could spend the rest of the evening explaining and talking about the benefits and the challenges of competency-based learning. But instead, I want to highlight three things that I think make Highland unique. The first is that in our competency-based learning environment, students are taught to struggle without feeling the sting of failure. They're taught to stay with concepts and skills until they reach a certain level of competency or proficiency in them and are ready for the next level of instruction. It's not one-and-done learning. The second thing that I wanted to highlight about Highland is the safe nurturing environment that we take a lot of pride in. That's borne out if you look at the climate and connect it to survey data, in which we score traditionally higher than the district in most areas. And the areas I think we're most proud of are in safety, opportunities for student leadership, and high expectations. The last thing that I wanted to highlight about Highland is a set of standards that we call personal and social service standards. There are three levels of PSS standards that all students must progress through during their time at Highland. It's an attempt to create well-rounded individuals who leave us when they graduate. It is the concept of the whole child, educating them not just intellectually, but socially, emotionally, physically. And as they progress through these standards, they access a depth of knowledge and understanding about themselves and their place in the world that is unique. Whenever I talk about these, at the end of each level, of PSS students have to do a presentation. When they get through the end of the first level, they really are talking to us about the things they've done. When they get through the second level, they are talking to us about the things they learned. And by the time they get through a Level Three PSS advancement, which it is very difficult for me to get through without breaking down into tiers, it's an explanation of who they have become as a young adult when they leave Highland. And in these standards, they explore things like their personal culture, their own personal fitness goals, service to the community, healthy eating habits, how to deal with peer pressure, all of the soft skills of education that are so critical to creating well-rounded young adults. Those are the things that we're proudest of at Highland. And I say every year at graduation, we don't have a great amount of quantity on our stage, but I will put the quality on our stage against any in the district, the state, and the country.
My name is Joanne Wester. I'm here on behalf of PIDEA, because Cheryl is flat on her back right now, so we're helping her out. I'm a head teacher there. And I just want to first start by saying what an honor and privilege it is to work for a district that embraces so many. Just listening to all of the options here, what a wealth of opportunity for parents. So, working for PIDEA is, we're in our third year now, and I often get the question, what is PIDEA? Who are you? How do you say it, right? And so I thought I would just go over what PIDEA stands for. It is an acronym, and a lot of people just recognize that PIDEA is a Greek word that encompasses the whole child, much like you mentioned. And again, the emotional, social, intellectual, and moral learning of a child. And we really work hard to embrace the whole child. But I'll go through each of the letters and talk a little bit about how we see our happiness in our school. P stands for passionately. We believe that both teachers and students who are passionate about teaching and learning in subjects that interest them will enhance drive, purpose, and meaning. A stands for accommodating. Our aim at PIDEA is to supply students with the tools to learn in a way that works for them and according to their needs. At times, adjustments or accommodations may be small group instruction with a certified ASD teacher, Zoom dot US teaching for flexible athletic schedules, and others one-to-one teaching. We actively strive to couple a student with steps for their success. I stands for individual. We believe each and every student is a unique learner with talents and passions to pursue. Helping each student tap into these particular characteristics enables a distinguished course of action. Each scholastic learning plan takes into consideration the desired outcomes of that student. D stands for desires. When a student is allowed to make decisions that satisfy a longing to learn about a particular area of interest, it is empowering and provides fulfillment and enjoyment. These desires are as unique as each student and begin with the learning plan as a path for that journey. E stands for enhancing. Meaningful learning enhances or intensifies the value of education. Just as tiny flecks of spices enhance a dish of food, we believe significant and purposeful experiences in learning magnify the value of understanding. We enhance opportunities of learning for our students through our quarterly exploratories, all-school community projects, and our bi-weekly field trips into the community. I stands for independent. Our goal as educators and parents is to raise up competent and contributing citizens who are ready for service in the 21st century. We believe that self-confidence and a belief in one's abilities enhance independence. A stands for achievements. Achievements can be big, an award or diploma, or small, learning to tie shoes or writing the ABCs, but they are all important. We believe that small achievements lead to great accomplishments if done with purposeful effort. PIDEA strives to encompass the whole child in work that is practical, significant, and responsible so that he or she is ready for his or her future.
Guten Tag, mein Name ist Chris Bar. Und ich liebe Rulka Schula. What I just told you in German is "good day." My name is Chris Bar, and I love Rulka Schula. And the best way I could explain in two minutes or less what we do at Rulka is to really narrow down to the mission statement, which is Rulka wants to produce engaged world citizens and lifelong learners in English and German. So I encourage you to come to our school. I think you're gonna see it every day that you walk in the building. We partner up with Amnesty to get German teachers into our building. They are trying to be teachers themselves, so they teach our kids German. We teach them how to teach, and it's a wonderful arrangement. We also have two German exchange programs. We have one with Fulda and one with Frankfurt. We will be going there this summer. I will be attending, which is exciting. But that happens every other year. They come to us every year, we go to them every other year. We are also building educational partnerships with German immersion schools around the United States. Actually, I've been invited to New York to share what we do well at Rulka. That was a personal invite. Also, Minnesota comes up, and they actually watch our teachers. So it's really neat that people want to know what we're doing in Anchorage. Also, we're building community partnerships, not only here in Anchorage, but we work with the German government as well. We get the Posh grant funding, and German representatives come up, so it's really cool to talk German with them, because I don't speak very much German, but it's always fun to see them. We are also the largest brick-and-mortar charter school in ASD. Right now, we currently have five hundred and one kids enrolled, and from K through eight, one hundred and thirteen students on our waitlist. So we are doing something very well at Rulka. Also, eleven out of thirteen eighth graders last year passed the B2 German Language Assessment. This is a national language assessment. And if you can pass that, you have an opportunity to attend a college in Germany for one year at their cost. So eleven out of thirteen of our students last year passed that test, which is phenomenal. Herr Downey, our music teacher, was awarded German Teacher of the Year last year. So that just speaks to the high-quality German and English that we're teaching in our building. We purchased Cengage for K through five, so we wanted our school to be in it together. We didn't want to split it up. And that's really been interesting, it's been working very well for our school. According to the data dashboard, we are the top ten school in attendance, which is excellent. And our parent-volunteer program is so healthy right now, and it's so nice to see the parents in our building and trying to learn German as well. So thank you very much. Hopefully, I didn't go over my time, so good luck, Adam.
Good afternoon, or good evening. I'm Adam O'Kelkey, I don't speak German. And Mr. Bar used up all my time. Anchorage Stream Academy is the newest charter school in your district. This is just our second year. The stream is the STEM acronym, and the small r stands for research, the small a stands for the arts. So we are a STEM-based school, which integrates research and the arts. We really have a three-pronged approach, and the interesting thing about that challenge is that each of those could be a charter school in and of itself. So we have the STEM focus that's inherent in our name. We have a focus on outdoor and experiential education, embracing our local community and environment, and a focus on project-based learning. So what we discovered last year in our first year, and really boiled down through visioning with our board and our staff, is that the driver of our program is project-based learning. So what we seek to do is integrate those three aspects, STEM-based learning and experiential education through project-based learning. And that really is the driver of everything we do. Examples of that, on the classroom-based level, teachers are required to produce at least one project with multiple standards per quarter within their content area, and encourage and often do integrate, take that to the next level, and integrate those projects in a cross-curricular way with at least one other teacher. And that's fairly, fairly common, if not, if not three different, different subject areas. The next level is whole-school projects, and through that, we try to integrate a lot of experiential education. So for example, we walked the Chester Creek system and counted salmon as part of a salmon project. We were out at Cheney Lake with permits from Fish and Game, trapping blackfish, which are an invasive species, and cataloging those and learning, learning more about those through sort of a law- sort of a longitudinal, school-wide project. And we are working with scientists in Girdwood to take moisture, foliage moisture samples and measure the moisture levels in the trees in Girdwood to see if that moisture level is declining and if the Girdwood Bowl could potentially be in danger of wildfires in the future. So that's, that's Stream Academy from the broad view and the three main focus areas of our school. I'd like to echo in closing what my colleague said. Eighteen years in education in Alaska, lifelong Alaskan, raised in rural Alaska, and this is my second year in the Anchorage School District. And just what an honor it is to work for the Anchorage School District with my colleagues and charter schools and for all of you. I just want to thank you.
Good evening. My name's Eric Anderson. This is my first year with ASD, and I am also excited to be here. I represent Winterberry. It's a Waldorf-inspired charter school. And Waldorf-inspired charter schools were started through the eyes of a philosopher named Rudolf Steiner, and, and it was his vision that we carry on in addressing the needs of the whole child. And some of the things that we do at Winterberry that are different from any other school is that the first grade, once the child starts with the first-grade teacher, then they loop with that teacher all the way through 8th grade. And the reason for that is to build relationships with, not only with the teacher and the student, but so the teacher can have that relationship and that trusting agreement between them and the child, so they can develop other relationships between their subject matter that they learn and the world around them, and to create a closer relationship with the world that we live in. So it's a very inspiring, I, I, this is, I'm still learning as we go, and I am very inspired by what these teachers do with their children and how, how they teach them to connect with the world around them. We have a block scheduling system, and so each day, each class has a two-hour block set aside for academics, and then that is followed by specials. And we have a Spanish program, we, a teacher, Spanish teacher that goes through each classroom. We have a movement teacher that, which is PE in the eyes of other people, but we have no gym, so all movement is handled outdoors. And we have yet to have an indoor recess that I have seen. The children are outside every day, no matter what. They do their PE outside every day, which is wonderful in my eyes. They are, our movement teacher is exceptional in his field. So we strive to meet the needs of students visually, auditorily, and kinesthetically in the classroom. And this is very important in the fact that auditory delivery of lessons is our main focus, because it is, all lessons are given orally. And the oral representation, we do not use textbooks. The teacher is an expert in the field of what they are teaching, and they teach that lesson, and the children create their own textbooks in what we call "main lesson books." It is fantastic when you see them. I would invite you to come and tour the school and see this in process. It's very inspiring. And this is, our professional development at the school is also inspiring. We have the Winterberry Parents Guild that does all our fundraising for our professional development, and right now, we have, I have to check with my experts, we have six, six people in the anti-DOC program right now, and that are continuing on in their, in their education of Waldorf methods. And we, it is funded by our Parents Guild, and it is, it is amazing of what they are, have accomplished so far. And so, right there, since I am new this year, that's, that's my report for now. Thank you very much.
At this point, we stand ready for questions from the board.
Open it for questions from board members. Ms. Davis.
I probably have a lot of questions, but I, the one thing I want to know, how many people in the charter schools have started off in the beginning and they're still at a charter school? Teachers, principals, whatever, anybody been there the full 20-some years? Only one. Yeah. And I was wondering how you, I know we get the information out about our charter schools, but do we give them all the information like you told us, what each charter school provide? So people will know exactly where, what's in your curriculum before they decide to come to your school?
I think that's a question for Darrell, unless somebody else wants to answer. Go for it.
Well, each charter school provides tours, and, and I know when I get calls from parents, when they, when they have specific questions, I will then direct them towards the principals. Principals are always wonderful. I'll give one of them a call, say, "I'm sending a parent your way," and so their answered, their questions are answered. We, we do pamphlet, but, and we are on the website, but it is important, the tours and parents visiting is critical.
As a segue to, to that, I just want to throw out an idea. As they just demonstrated, very articulate and succinct explanation of their programs, can we videotape that and make those available online? Just an idea. Other board members.
Are you trying to say, ask us if we agree with what you just said?
No, 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 no. Other questions. Other questions from other board members.
Well, I just wanted to say, this is my second year on the board, and I'm looking forward to visiting each and every one of the charter schools. Highland Tech, I, I really liked what you talked about at the beginning, because I'm an opponent of grit, and I think you're, I'm sure all of you are, but you definitely explained it in a way that I think you are teaching your students grit, and that is a characteristic of success. So, thank you.
Ms. Nelling.
I am working on a whole list of questions, because we just got that document sometime in the middle of the day today, but I have two of them that I would like to ask now, and I don't know if it's easy to do like a thumbs up or a thumbs down. Relative to enrollment, we are looking at it as a district for the charter schools. Are they up or down versus where they expected to be, you know, projected for this year? I know, and projections were done last spring, so that's.
Principals, you want to do a thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs sideways?
Okay. All right. Is that where you thought you'd be? There are always questions on charter school abilities to work with students with disabilities. And I see on page three, there is a little bit of a breakdown in there. Do any of the charter schools currently serve any students with intensive needs?
Yeah, I'd just be cautious how we answer, because it'd probably be a small number, so.
Okay.
There are a few, yes.
Okay. That's, that's it for now, and then the rest I will, okay. A lot of other questions.
Ms. Plunkett. I'll just say, I, I love all of our choice and our charter schools, and I appreciate you all. I'm really happy, in particular, and while I think I've been to most of you throughout the different years, hearing that the Pathway Home is now back under ASD, because when it was first established by South Central Foundation, they had to use a different homeschool-type program, so I'm glad it's back under ASD. And it's, it's really the whole child that you're working with and giving materials to. It's, it's a pretty awesome program.
So I'd just like to take an opportunity to comment, too. When I travel to other districts, particularly in other states for national conferences, and I talk about the choice that we have via our alternative or optional programs, inclusive of our charter schools, people are utterly stunned that we have so many choices to meet the different philosophies and learning styles of our students and families. And so I think today was a perfect example of that, and it does make me proud to be part of this district and that we do aim to meet all of our students wherever they are. So, again, just, we need to, we need to do a better job of self-promotion in terms of what those options are. And so anything that we can do with our communications department, through our administration, I, as a board member, would be behind 100%. Thank you all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to bring up Mr. Roth, and we will move to our third item that we were asked to provide for you tonight. Dr. Bishop has asked that we review the bond options, and so Mr. Roth is here to do
Dr. Stock, through, through the board president. Good afternoon. Thank you for, for the opportunity to address the 2018 capital improvement bond. Up front, this is not intended to be presumptive by any stretch, and I acknowledge that the board has not made a decision to advocate a bond proposition on the 2018 ballot. I'm joined today by, by a number of subject matter experts who can discuss and talk to specific questions about capital projects, project delivery methods, and also the district systems for contracting. Also, if, if the question comes up, we can also discuss different bond debt scenarios with the assistance of the CFO. So, again, my purpose really is to provide information to the board, but I think more importantly, we're looking for comments and guidance from the board, both individually and collectively, on the topic of a 2018 bond proposition. It's important for us to understand your priorities and your concerns, and to be sure your comments individually and collectively will help us, inform us as we go forward to develop a more refined courses of action for presentation to the board. Next slide. So real quick, my, my agenda, I'll, I'll go very briefly through a timeline for, for a 2018 bond proposal. I'll very quickly, you know, give a snapshot overview of what assets the district does have. I'll talk through the 2017 through 23 six-year capital improvement plan focused on the 2018 year, more as a, as a, a start point that the district applied to, to developing options. And then I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about the 2017 bond proposal. At that time, we're prepared to provide an update on that, where we are with regards to those specific projects. And at that time, we can answer questions with regards to project delivery methods as well as contracting. But I do want to advise the board that some of these projects do remain in negotiation, and that may limit some of the questions that we can respond to in this public session, but at the discretion of the board president, we can certainly take it into executive session to answer some of those more finite questions. Next slide, please. So real quick, this is a review. The district has 93 buildings of those 86 are schools, seven are support facilities, comprising about 7.8 million square feet of floor space. The, the estimated replacement value for that real property is approximately $2 billion. The district is also the site manager of three vacant sites for potential future schools. Those are the Muldoon site, West Park, and then there's a site up in North Eagle River. So real quick, if I might, we are on the, at the 25th of September, the, the board is going to have four opportunities to, at minimum, to engage the administration and to provide guidance, and then to act on a bond proposition if that is the decision of the board. Today marks the first discussion on this topic. Previously to this meeting, the administration did meet with the superintendent, Dr. Stock and the chief, to address the information we were planning to present to the board today. Also, the CP and CE leadership has met with the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. In fact, the committee held a meeting today. So, so that process is moving forward. I would just also last highlight that we are a bit constrained in terms of timing. In order for a bond proposition, if that's the decision of the board, for that to make it on the April ballot, it must be approved by the Assembly by the second session in January. The date I've listed there, the ninth, is in fact the first session to give some time if there are questions that could occur on the Assembly. I'll pause for any questions at this time.
Refresh my mind what the acronym COA is?
Course of.
Action.
And, and if I might, thank you.
Good military acronym.
Through the president. If, if I might, because, because tonight, we're going to talk options, and the options are not intended to be recommendations or proposed courses of action. A course of action is a bit more refined, based on, you know, some of the guidance and limitations that we would anticipate receiving from the board. Also, if I might, for the board's information, on the 23rd of October, when we come back with courses of action, we're also going to present information from a, a survey conducted by, by Hayes LLC. Unfortunately, we don't have that, those results yet, but we also believe that will provide good information to the board. So this, this document, or this passage, I'll allow board members a moment to read. This, this comes from the current six-year CIP. It was actually drafted in May of 2016. The board carried it forward. To synopsize, in this document, the board prioritized life safety, critical building components, and security spread across the district as the priorities for capital improvement. School-level renewals would be pursued based on substantial need and prior planning investments. I will highlight to the board that the board did include two elementary schools for potential inclusion on a 2018 bond proposition. And I'll discuss that as we get into the options here momentarily. So real quick, a, a snapshot of the table one out of the six-year CIP, I'll draw your attention to the, the column of year two, which is identified by the blue arrow. This demonstrates a plan for the year 2018, and I've highlighted the three schools that were listed in the 2018 proposal, the first being Abbott Loop. This is a design in preparation for a, a more involved renovation that would install a fixed fire suppression system in the school. Because of the height of the roof, that would also require a, a raising of that roof, calling for a much more involved renovation project on that school. So this $500,000 depicts planning costs in preparation for that, and this is something that we've been given guidance by the fire marshal to have complete by the year 2020, or 2021, the construction beginning in 2020. So I'd very like to, I'd like to very quickly go through the 2017 bond proposal. Next slide, please. This is a synopsis in short. Voters approved a $58.45 million bond proposition in April of this year. That, that proposition consisted of eight roofs, three ventilation system replacements. The ventilation systems were in three schools that were also getting roof replacement, as well as a seismic improvement and, and some interior modifications to the West and Romig IMC. Next, please. Each board member should have a, in front of them, a copy of the, the project status. I'll briefly orient you to the chart, beginning in the upper-left corner. From, from left to right, column one and two list the specific school and project. Columns three and four demonstrate the estimated cost and the design status. Where you see a zero entered under design status in some of those blocks, the district is in the process of negotiating with designers of record for those projects. Those numbers, therefore, represent conceptual cost estimates that are based on deed-provided funding formulas. Column five depicts the construction delivery method, if that has been determined. Column six is the targeted construction window for a respective project, and then column seven lists any notes that are specific to a project. So to recap, in April 2017, voters approved eight roof replacements, three HVAC projects, and the West Romig IMC, as discussed. With the exception of the IMC, which is under construction now, the remaining projects are. the remaining projects are in the planning or the design phase with planned construction for all beginning in 2018. The three HVAC replacement projects are integrated with or sequential to roof replacements. So as I mentioned earlier, I do have subject matter experts with me, and I'm prepared to discuss any projects specific that the Board has interest, again, to talk design or construction delivery methods, talk about the contracting as well as funding.
Are there any Board questions at this point? See none? We'll continue and maybe pick up some more questions later.
So at this time, I will transition to the discussion of options.
Excuse me, I do see a Mr. Board Hand, Ms. Marsette.
So what you're, we're looking at the bond project status of what's going on now, right? Okay. No, I've got another question further down.
So at this time, I'd like to, again, transition to options. And the purpose really is to facilitate a discussion amongst the Board members. The administration is not requesting any decisions or asking for any directive guidance, but to be sure, any comments and sentiments conveyed by members individually or collectively will inform the development of more refined courses of action. As I mentioned, this will be the first of four engagements on the topic. On October 23rd, the administration will present more refined options to the Board with a recommended course of action. Our intent, based on the outcome of that meeting, is to introduce a Board memorandum to the Board on the November 6th evening session. This afternoon, I will present three options. You're going to notice within those options that many of the projects carry over, but that some projects will be sequenced differently. These are all, excuse me, they're all existing capital improvement projects. They're important. And while the sequencing is purposeful, it is not intended to infer a recommendation by the administration at this time. And again, we certainly stand prepared to discuss any individual projects to explain why these projects made the cut. The options share one continuous theme, and that is life safety, the first priority given to the administration by the Board. So the differences generally will encompass the prioritization by categories, whether it be school renovations or component replacement or renewals. The second significant point is funding. Each option will display a running cumulative total in a threshold where the cumulative conceptual cost estimates approach the anticipated debt retirement level, and I'll talk to that momentarily. So if I might, transition to the first option. Option 1, priority safety and planning. So to start with, a brief orientation to the charts, again, starting from the upper-left, working right. Columns 1, 2, and 3 depict the school, the project, the estimated cost, and furthest to the right, you'll see the cumulative total. Column 4 provides some details on the project, and the final column is the anticipated year of construction. I'd like to highlight three items. First, Inlet View and Wonder Park, as you see, are projects that are highlighted in green. This is intended to demonstrate that previously-approved funds have been spent to achieve a more finite cost estimate for these two school projects. And our goal is to have a 35% design complete by the end of October. I also have drawn a blue dotted line, and that is the notional point where, were we to add an additional project, we would exceed what we anticipate is the debt retirement amount for the year 2018, which right now, I believe, stands at 55.
56.5.
56.5 million. So I'll pause. Any questions on the format of the option?
Yeah, I have a question on the very first, the Abbott Loop. I thought you showed us earlier that was on the bond priorities for this year. So why do you show it here for 2019 bond?
The, this would be on, through the President, this would be on the 2018 bond for the planning.
For the planning design, okay.
The actual project proposal would go forward in the 2019 bond, and this would allow, but the planning would allow, theoretically, would allow us to begin construction by 2020. So if I might just go through this, the Abbott Loop, again, you will see Abbott Loop on all three options. It will be the first project of the three just because of its, the exigency of timing. The next project, East Planning, we're estimating that this cost would be about $1 million. And I'll come back to East because you'll see that on the third course of action, East has multiple requirements, one of them being, East does not have an integrated fire suppression system. Unlike Abbott Loop, the Fire Marshal has not given us directive guidance on rectifying that limitation. However, we recognize it's appropriate and that we want to kind of set things in motion that would allow the district to address this shortcoming. It also has a master plan dating back to 1999, which is clearly very dated to the requirements of the school. There are some other seismic issues that have surfaced in the gymnasium that we would advocate.
And I'm going to interrupt you at this point for a question from Mr. Donnelly.
What all is included in an integrated fire suppression system?
You want to talk to that Tom?
Sure, through the President. The integrated fire suppression system, it includes, you know, connection to the alarms and to the intercom system, but also it goes to different parts of the building. As you'll see in Course of Action 3, it covers the academic areas, and then the second part of it covers the gym area, and the last part of it covers the pool area.
Okay, I still don't understand. Does the areas of the building it covers, but what is it? What does it involve?
Sprinkler system.
Sprinkler system. There's no, there's no ceiling-mounted sprinkler system in East High School.
Okay, is there anything more than the sprinkler system? And what causes it to ignite or sprinkle?
Yes, it's a whole system, through the President. It's a whole system that goes to the alarm, intercom system. It's all integrated.
Okay, so it's similar to the problem we've got at Abbott Loop, then? We don't have.
Through the President, yes. I mean, it's a pretty glaring deficiency in the school that by current code, we would anticipate, if we don't do it, eventually, we're going to be directed to do it. So in this option, what we're advocating is the planning that would allow the district to lay out a master plan to achieve that repair as well as other, some other repairing shortcomings. The next project, Service High School Fire Suppression System, again, this is limited to the gymnasium, but again, it's a similar facility that does not have an integrated fire suppression system. The fourth project.
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt. That's already been planned and designed, and that's why this is the do-it phase for Service? I see that rather than the planning phase, you have actually a much larger amount, and so I'm assuming there's already been planning done?
Through the President, no, there hasn't been planning done. But for Service High School, that includes additional safety improvements, some seismic, and then also energy efficiency improvements that kind of go along with that.
So is this 6.6 million just planning?
No.
No.
Through the President, it is planning and construction.
Okay, okay, I understand that. So why with East, aren't we moving with planning and construction simultaneously? Is this to keep us within the budget of the retired bond?
Through the President, again, these are options, and you will see in the third option that those specific projects that Mr. Fenicev referenced are in fact prioritized.
Okay.
So again, it goes back to the conversation, discussion, and guidance from the Board, where priorities will be. But again, this is just to demonstrate safety and, you know, planning. So if I might, just to talk through the remainder here. Inlet View is a, what we are advocating, which is different, is a building life extension on this school. It's a bit more involved than an emergent component replacement. Additionally, this school is limited based on when it was built. It doesn't have a existing gymnasium, and also, it doesn't have an integrated fire suppression system. So this would be a more involved renovation, followed by Mears Middle School. This is a roof replacement, a major component replacement based on design life and just the condition of the roof. Wonder Park Elementary School, a, this would be an emergent component renewal. Wonder Park very similar to Gladys Wood, part of that open-floor plan, building pods. The intent would be to correct that building style or those classroom designs. And then lastly, you'll see four roof replacements. Again, these are envelope protection projects for Birchwood, Homestead, North Star, and Tarmigan. So that is option 1. Again, the priority being to safety and planning in preparation for potentially addressing the East High School requirements. And then you will see that the schools, which are consistent with the CIP, are on that option above what would be debt retirement.
I'm sorry, Ms. Marsette.
On, I know you're going to present the other options, but is there more information, you know, when you're looking at service and it says associated safety and energy efficient improvements, exactly what those are?
Yes, through the President, absolutely. And thank you for that question. What we are intending to do when we come back to present Courses of Action is to go into much more finite detail. Again, the intent here is to try and get understanding of priorities amongst individual Board members as well as a collective thought. So it's not to be vague. It's just when we present something with, or an option, Course of Action with recommendations, we'll be very specific on what those projects would be, if that answers your question.
It does answer my question, but with the options, and we have to select between the two options and giving you direction, it might be that we need to know what those additional safety and that sort of thing is to be able to select those options.
Do you have somebody here can talk to the seismic issues of Service or what the proposed?
The details of that. This, the expanded scope includes ceiling lights, fire, seismic. So one of the things that is a cost savings to the district is to address, when you're, when you have to go in for a roof repair or fire suppression system, it is much cheaper when all that is opened up to address a lot of those needs. And a lot of times, that's when we find the seismic problems. So it does include more than the fire suppression system. It includes some seismic upgrading lighting, and then also fire code. So we can provide more detailed information at a later time.
I personally, as a Board member, I can't select an option unless I know what all the requirements are and what they consist of so that I can make an informed decision.
Mr. Halloman?
And I think I'm understanding what you're saying is, it's not that these are other projects in the school that somebody wants to have happen. These are things that you're partway into because of the primary work you're doing. And it just makes sense if you've got the roof open or you've got people in the ceiling to take care of these things at that time, even if they may not be the main part of what you're doing. Is there any, any of these optional projects that would fall outside of a description like that? I think is maybe what you're asking, or?
If I might, through the President. And if I might, to Member Marsette, I understand the concern. What we're not wanting to do, and my regrets if we're conveying that these options are intended to pull decisions or ask you to make a decision, that is not the intent. We're really trying to understand priorities. And I recognize, and my regrets, that I'm not prepared to talk to the specific subcomponents of any scope of work on a project. But to be sure, we're going to get that information to you. And when we were to present a Course of Action, to be sure, any project on that, the information will be inclusive of all the scope of work. So I'm hoping that what we're drawing is guidance and questions more on where priorities are. So to Mr. Halloman, is that, kind of get after what you're asking? And I don't know that these are intended to be opportunistic upgrades just because we've got a roof off. But to be sure, there may be opportunities when you do a project like this. It may just make sense to do energy efficiency projects or, you know, anytime you open on a roof, odds are, you're going to reinforce the seismic aspects to ensure you're compliant with existing code. I mean, some of these, just because you open a school up, you are obliged to meet the existing standards. So that could be an outcome.
Okay, I'm going to interject, Dr. Stock.
Yeah, Mr. Roth, since we're running out of time, maybe, would it be all right, Madam President, if we just did a one-minute overview of each of the options without the detail? Since this is the first of four times that this will be brought back, but at least maybe the Board could see the, maybe the distinction between what you've labeled as Option 1, safety plus planning, and just a general statement about Option 2 and 3. That way, they'll at least see the overall differences between the three. Come back in our next one, and we'll get into the details.
Thank you, through the President. So Option 2, very quickly, you'll note that the two schools have moved up towards the top behind the Abbott Loop project. This is based on the six-year CIP. And then you'll see from there the safety projects, the East High Service, following and behind those, and then the roof replacements listing out towards the bottom. And then Option 3, in Option 3, we do list the specific projects for East High School, the intent being not just to have a planned upgrade to the existing master plan, but to actually move forward on the academic area, the gym, and then the pool. Just for reference here, the pools, if the pool is inside a structure that is contiguous to the remaining portion of the school, then we own it. Whereas if it's a standalone building, then the municipality has responsibility for that structure. So for East High School, the district is responsible for that building, and it lacks a fire suppression system.
Ms. Nilling?
On all three of your options, 1, 2, and 3, there's a dotted blue line. Near as I can tell, the only thing that represents is that's like the 50 million mark? Is there a difference significantly?
Through the President, yes, that's correct. And again, that's intended to denote, were you to add a project past that blue line, you're potentially going above the proposed, or projected debt retirement.
And I would just like to throw out, I would like to see an Option 4 where Abbott Loop is not just planned, but it's put into construction phase faster since this is a project we've kicked down the road for a number of years and have basically stayed in the good graces of the Fire Chief, but that may not persist. Mr. Donnelly?
So I guess you're asking for some feedback.
Can you move forward to the next slide, please? Just. Just if I might, very quickly, in terms of options to the board, the board can opt to do no bond, a single-year bond, which is the typical practice. The board could look at a multi-year option potentially. One common potential is to take monies from the operating budget and apply it to capital. And then you see some of the methods I've listed, a single bond or multiple smaller bonds, similar to what the municipality does. And then you can see broken down by category types. And then lastly, the bond amount, which, again, is guidance that we're certainly looking forward to from the board.
Mr. Donnelly?
Well, I'm prepared to offer some feedback. Can we go back to Option Number One on the slide? Thank you. I'd be, first of all, I think my top priorities, well, first of all, I'd favor a one-year bond that stayed within the existing debt retirement, but emphasized safety and the types of projects such as the roof replacements that are just basic protection of our existing facilities that have to be done to preserve them. I'd be interested in learning more about the building life extension projects, what amount of that is safety-related versus non-safety-related, and code-related versus non-code-related.
Thank you.
So, that's my feedback.
Other board members have any feedback they want to share at this time? Ms. Marsette?
I'm kind of the same. I would want bond, not stay within that debt reimbursement, and I definitely need this broken down a little bit more for me. Inlet View is one of those that we kicked down the road because we had talked about, do I dare say the word? We had talked about, you know, the future of that school, and, you know, so there are some issues of that school as far as safety and that sort of thing on seismic. So those are definitely things we have to look at. But I just want a better breakdown before I identify any projects that I would want to see.
And I'll just tag on to what I said previously about an option four. I'll clarify that even further. In addition to Abbott Loop, I want to see those projects that are safety issues take precedence over everything else. So when I say safety, it has to do with specifically fire suppression and seismic, if it does indeed represent something similar to what we've seen in some of our schools in the last earthquake. And of course, a roof, there is always a safety component too, if the roof is at the condition where it might fail, but I also see that as maybe the second tier in terms of the investment in our facilities and making sure that they are operating and we aren't having more buckets in our schools. The final question I have to say, and I don't remember where it is on the six-year CIP, but I know Green has some major roof issues because I've seen the drips, and I've seen their systems to mitigate that currently. Where does that sit right now? Just if you can refresh my memory? Not till 2020?
Page seven.
Page seven, okay. Thank you. Other questions from the board, other comments, feedback? Okay, as we stated, this is not going to be our first, in only time, we'll be working with this information a number of times in the future, but this was our first flush. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you for the time.
At this point, we're going to switch gears and move to our focus on staff, students, and community. Dr. Stock, would you please present?
Well, on behalf of Dr. Bishop, and I can tell you she's unable to be here tonight, so I'm Mark Stock, Deputy Superintendent, and I can tell you without any question, this is Dr. Bishop's favorite part of every board meeting, where we get to acknowledge some of the great things going on in our district. And we have two special awards tonight, and the first one, I'd like to share just a little bit about it before we call up our staff who are finalists for this award. So this is the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. It is the highest recognition that a kindergarten through 12th grade math or science teacher, and that includes computer science, can receive for outstanding teaching in the United States. The winners are going to be announced later this year. And before I say the last little part, I'd like to bring up the following folks, if they are present. These are our finalists. Jennifer Childress, Diamond High School. Come on up. Kelly Hour, East High School. Heather Bascom, Roaming Junior High School. Jamie Keith, Eagle River High School. Ann Cherry or Windler Middle School. Michael Lanzerone, Bartlett High School. And Joshua Hall, Diamond High School. This award recognizes those teachers who develop and implement a high-quality instructional program that is informed by content knowledge and enhances student learning. Since the program's inception, more than 4,700 teachers have been recognized nationally for their contributions in the classroom and to their profession. So once again, let's give them a big round. Yeah, except for now, we have to go through a public embarrassment thing that Dr. Bishop always does. Is there anything you'd like to share?
There are a lot of things I'd like to share. But I think I'm going to leave it at, I had a great day working with Anchorage School District students today. Good to see you here. And I look forward to keep on going.
Just write it all down.
Pass the public embarrassment.
Just honored to be, I know a couple of people up here, and so it's a pretty awesome group to be a part of.
I would second that. This is a tremendous honor, but I also know that there are many really spectacularly talented teachers in science and math in our district who have not been nominated or have not been able to complete the application, so it's more like on behalf of them.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you very much.
I am so proud to be a public educator, and I am so proud to stand up here on behalf of so many of us that work so hard with students every day to increase student learning and to help them become good thinkers, looking forward into their future.
I just also want to say that I wouldn't be effective a teacher without the leadership at my school and working with some wonderful colleagues at Windler Middle School, but of course, we're all here for the kids, and this is a really fun job.
Thank you very much.
I think you can see the humility and the wonderful kindness that comes from them, and I just want to thank you for, Dr. Bishop. Thank you. And for our second award, I'd like to have Maureen Retzel and the Muldoon Elementary Student Authors who are here in attendance to come forward, please. You see Mr. Grant on his way up here. There we go. So Contributions to Literacy in Alaska, the CLIA Awards, have been presented annually since 1993 by the Alaska Center for the Book. This is Alaska's liaison with the Library of Congress Center for the Book. CLIAs honor people and programs that have made significant contributions in literacy, the literary arts, or the preservation of the written or spoken word. Nearly 80 individuals and agencies have been recognized over the years. These range from authors, publishers, booksellers, to teachers and teacher aides, historians and linguists, and more. Muldoon Elementary School is one of four recipients of the 2017 CLIA Awards. For nine years, students and teachers have worked in the school's Student Treasuries Program to write, illustrate, and publish their own hardbound books, ranging from graphic novels to history and science. Students work on writing, grammar, punctuation, story layout, and design. Through the Anchorage School District online public access catalog, the books are available to all ASD students and staff through the WorldCat to readers worldwide. The school board and the administration would like to congratulate librarian Maureen Retzel and her Muldoon Elementary School authors. And Maureen would like to share a little about the journey as writers and authors of Student Treasuries Program and have some student authors read a selection for us tonight.
Thank you. It started kind of like a little mustard seed. Lillian Jackstad, who is the former librarian of Fairview and Creekside, and I had this wee little idea after taking a class from Kathy Clausen, who was teaching writing at the time in our middle schools. We had this conviction that there was an important relationship between reading and writing, that writing contributes to our intuitive readers, and that reading really contributes to our writing skills. But we wanted to do something that brought an appreciation to our Alaska beauty as well. So we decided to form a nature writing club. And it went from that to 2008, 2009, to starting to write these amazing, well-published hardcover editions. And what happened was, over at Creekside, they were doing this. They were getting manuscripts, writing materials, putting together everything that you said, doctor, and then putting it into manuscripts, sending it to Kansas, coming back as these hardcover books. And from then, it went on to all the classrooms in our school writing books. And to this current year, we are still writing books. And some of the topics that we have covered, as you indicated, are graphic novels, Alaska Here is one that is a graphic novel written by Emilio Anderson, illustrated by another student at our school, Maria Single. It all started with this simple little book called Nature Poems, and I now have the honor of one of our authors. You see, this represents nearly 1,000 student authors. There are 31 books that are currently in our library. There are, oh, here's one of our other authors. They are illustrators, they are poets, and published authors. They share that equally with any other author. We are so very, very proud of them. And there is a book that these two girls helped to author. It was a time when we were hearing in the news what was happening in Syria, especially in the city of Gallepol, and it broke our hearts. And so as a librarian, teaching a walk-to-read class, we decided to investigate. We read books about Syria, we shared everything that we could learn about Syria, and then we decided to imagine what would it be like if we were a child in Syria. And so I beg your listening for just an extra moment. And this is Lakeia Nelson and Angel Tiaco, and they're just going to share what they wrote, thinking about if though they were a child in Syria and then a child here in Alaska. [Music] [Music] Interestingly enough, you think we just have student authors? We also had a mother that contributed to this book. She's sitting over there taking a photograph of Lakeia. She contributed a hummus recipe. She did the Google research, and then she got it in the book too. So this was an amazing collaboration. And here is Angel Tiaco with her Syrian child poem.
[Music]
publishers, and illustrators, and poets, we are so honored by this recognition. Thank you so very, very much.